I'd like to call this meeting of the Montgomery City Council into session. Thank everybody for being here and those turning in to our meeting this evening. I'd like to ask that you silence your cell phones to avoid any interruptions in our proceedings this evening, please. All right, we do have everyone present. All five members are here this evening and staff is present as well. With that, I'd like to ask you to join us for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the day-to-day blessings that we see. Help us to be grateful, thankful for the things that we have. We do ask, Lord, for the rain. Send us the rain. Send us the relief that we need there. We ask for your protection on all kinds of school personnel as well as the families as we return to school in short order, and we ask for your protection and grace there. We ask also that you guide and direct our proceedings this evening and as we go forth, give us wisdom that we may act with all due prudence, and we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
So lift the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one nation, indivisible.
Okay, under the visitors' citizens' forum, we had no one, no one to sign up for that, so we'll go on to consent agenda, item one, approval of the following: A, city council meeting minutes for 6/27/23; B, city council meeting minutes for 7/11/23; and C, city council meeting minutes for 7/25/23. What's the council's pleasure on those items?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving item one, consent agendas A, B, and C. Council meeting minutes A, B, and C, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve consent agenda item one. A, B, and C, council meeting minutes. Item two, discussion and consideration for approval of the proposed amendments to the Redbird Meadow City of Montgomery Development Agreement.
Mayor, the developers had several meetings internally. We've had these two calls meetings with the city council. The developers proposing amendments to the approved development agreement. Over the course of those workshops, he's proposed the amendments to all, and I think we've worked that out. The kids here tonight formally present those amendments to you and ask you to consider approving the amended development agreement. So with that, I'll turn over to the developer if you want. You know, you want the proposal. Hit the way it sounds.
For sure. So again, Michael Crackwell, LJ, like you said, plenty of talks. On page 65, you kind of see a summary of those changes within your guys' agenda there. Again, kind of quick summary to go through all, but new match count, six eighty-two, sixties, seventies, and eighties. Agreed to a potential one-acre site within the development for a future water plant site, but the city so sees fit. Minimum width roads are 24-foot wide, as shown on exhibit G, which if you guys want to follow along on that picture, again, it's on pages 73 and 74 with those agreements. Another one was entered into a tri-party agreement with the city and the county regarding improvements to Old Planesville Road over time, and then the multi-use trail along Old Planesville Road, along with the kind of the schedule for the amenities within the development. I think you're showing, seeing the videos of how great those are going to look. And then also the minimum side setback, allowing the five feet for the most part, but twenty-five or 20% of these side lots have a minimum of 15 feet between building lines adjacent to each other. So we'll do that on the plat, and we'll be working with you guys, city engineer, on that and making sure we're following that. Again, 20% per phase, being three different phases. Any other questions?
We said 20% per phase or 20% overall?
Per phase, yeah. Phase one.
It's the same.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because we're delivering a scheduled deal, that's why.
You don't have to go do this.
Just me.
And you said the walk path, you said downhill Planesville. I thought it went through the middle of the...
We'll have that as well.
Okay.
Yeah, that was already in the development plan, and that was one additional item that was on Old Planesville.
Okay.
And that'll go as construction goes along with the early phases.
And you said 25-foot setback? No kidding. Just kidding.
I just want to verify with staff, it was a big matter of prayer in my neighborhood western side. I wanted to see if there was another place for that water solution to just verify that there's no need to put anything there on the west end where we have that property, correct? So this alleviates that problem by having a spot to take care of that need.
This water plant site is large enough to serve the city's needs for water and for sale.
And that can free up the city with the acre that we own to do whatever.
Correct.
Perfect.
I make a motion to approve the proposed amendments to Redbird Meadow City of Montgomery Development Agreement.
Motion to Sarah and a second off from Cheryl. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving item two as presented, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve item two. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Now, Mayor, I'd like to say thank you to the council, the mayor, the city manager, and this is what I...
It was.
...doing hard work with the city for many years.
Appreciate it.
And hopefully within 90 days, which would be great.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great asset to the city, no doubt, no doubt. All right, item number three, consideration possible action on the following: An ordinance of the city council of the city of Montgomery, Texas, amending the rates to be charged for solid waste collection service inside the city of Montgomery, Texas, providing for a penalty for failure to pay accounts, providing conditions upon which service will be resumed, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing a savings clause, providing a Texas Open Meeting Act clause, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the waste management calls from CPI, at least annually, August 1st. So this ordinance will reflect that change.
So this was something we knew was coming and now it's got...
Yeah. Yeah. And if you remember, we did, I think we did increase back January last year.
Right.
You know, it was my first week, so that was one we missed from the year before.
Okay.
So in time to urban consumers.
So it will be on which invoice that I get or which statement? Is it on there now? Did it go up already?
No, doesn't we have... The increase happens August 1st, correct? It's effective August 1st, but it won't apply until you get your September invoice. We bill it a year.
If you have a motion.
It's always been annually? I don't feel like I ever remembered it. I thought it was every few years.
It is each year, and it's all based on, or it's all calculated based on super pricing that's for garbage and trash collection. So, you know, CPI can tell all kinds of values and maybe you can track that from the end of the year because we're talking trash, that's one that we use so that you can assess or evaluate, you know, this inflation rate of industry. You can imagine, sure, with anything else, if we go to the grocery store and order chicken or chicken breasts and those kinds of things. So it's been more than normal. It was 6.93 this year. In years past, so like, you know, I remember maybe four years ago, we did this, this isn't just in the garden, this was many of our local parks. I would have said CPI four years ago was probably 4% or 5%, so it has gone up just with everything else. But we do track that year to year, and then we get applied or adjust based on what that's doing. We look at April, so that way we have enough time to provide notice of those types of things. Like last year was just to hit up with a lot of things, you know, Carrie was here and that's when she left, and so communication wasn't quite as good at that time. So, but we are back on track now. So what we would use it for, things that we have seen here in the past year for actually more, you know, when we buy a garbage container, you need to garbage park, let's say, we're probably paying about $18 more for that garbage cart to replace our driver wages, which, you know, that was priority, or if we're competing with everybody else, I mean, a driver right now, but we had to increase our wages about 32%. Not specific to our home industry, so these were the both sides, we're dealing with all. So, you know, as even though there is an adjustment, not rate, it's going to, you know, it's going to those things that I just pointed out. So, and we do appreciate it, and we do appreciate the partnership. This has been several years now. One of the things is almost fixed.
Yep.
You know that you can pressure this thing, we appreciate the opportunity to use it this next year.
Thank you.
CDL drivers are a premium these days, aren't they?
They are. They are. They might keep their big ones, they're...
Absolutely.
...drivers that have lots of low gently around them, one of the streets which are safe. I'm trying to...
All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second is by Stan. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approving item three as presented, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve item three, rate increase as stated. Item four, consideration possible action on an ordinance of the city council of the city of Montgomery, Texas, amending Article VI, operation of golf carts on public streets of the city code of ordinances, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing a serving of balls, and providing an effective date.
Good evening, mayor and council. We brought this to you a couple meetings ago, but it needed to be fixed. We sent it out to the attorneys to get the ordinance fixed on golf carts. Two of the major changes was that golf carts would now have to be registered with the state, and the other part was the time of day that they can be utilized. Everything else is counted in place, and we took care of putting it in the right order. So we're just recommending that you approve this new ordinance on golf carts.
When you have to start writing tickets without, if you don't have a...
Ma'am.
If you have the license plate, is there a grace period, like 90 days before you start writing tickets?
No, ma'am.
I'm asking for Carol. It's grandfather.
About 90 minutes.
So as soon as this is adopted, then it goes into effect?
Ma'am?
As soon as this is adopted, it goes into effect, okay.
Yes, ma'am. We'll start tomorrow. We've already started with getting it out to the public and letting them know when they need the registration forms and things of that nature. So we'll give you, we'll give you a grace period on that because we've got to get these things out to people before, and it's a change, so it's not something that's going to, we'll start writing citations on them right away.
So how does the general public actually know that this is going to affect?
I was gonna ask on that.
I'm sorry.
Is there any chance that we can get a mailer in the water bill? A mailer in the water bill?
Yes.
And some of the ordinance change to golf carts?
Agree.
Absolutely, and that's all in the plan, to put the mailers in the water bills. Also, we'll put it on websites and things of that nature, so...
I have my tag.
Yes, ma'am, I know, you got you.
I have my tag.
Such a hot topic. Grandfather.
I think that's grandmother, actually, but anyway.
Maybe that would be what it's called. I approve the amendment to the city of Montgomery municipal code by repealing the Article VI in its entirety and adopting the amended Article VI as proposed.
I just had one question for clarification. Just trying to figure out section 86-210, 35 miles an hour and all that. Given our city, that curve coming in and that intersection that's just west of the curve, it's 35, so just give me some specifics about it. They're not going to try to cross it there at that place?
No, you can, you can only cross these golf carts at an intersection. An intersection is full-way curb to curb, and it has to cross that.
So the key word is intersection.
Yes, because it's like people will come by the mama's barbecue and try and cross that.
That's the part.
That's not an intersection.
Okay, just wanted to be sure that we knew that. All right, so we have a motion.
I second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion?
Candy office, Carol.
Who said a motion? Sarah? Did Sarah, or not?
I was.
Did you make a motion?
I did, she did.
I thought so. And a second is by Cheryl. Any further discussion? Okay, motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item four as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Is there anyone opposed? Say no. All right, we're gonna go for one on the basis of the grandmother clause.
Grandmother clause.
And so we will approve item four with some measure of reluctance.
That's so funny.
Item five, consideration of possible action on the annual permit renewal for Cedar Crest Mobile Home Park.
Mayor and council, you have in your packet the application for Cedar Crest Mobile Home Park. Just as a note, this is a non-conforming park under the ordinance. It is also our only mobile home park within the city, and so per the code, they submit their application for the renewal, they submit their fee, and the city's compelled to renew it. Be happy to answer any questions or talk about anything you'd like.
I hear a lot of complaints in what I do, but I've never heard any out of this.
I share about 300 feet with them. They're, you know, the neighbors have always been good. The upkeep of the park has gotten much, much better since the new owners have bought the park.
That's true. Curious, explain to me again why that there's no inspection, because there used to be, I thought.
Right, right. In a normal, so there on page, let me find it, 149 of your packet there, if you're a non-conforming park, these are the things that you do. In other words, the city can't add a regulation or add a step or add a condition for the renewal. I think what had happened was, you know, if you could do one for a normal park that was permitted under this ordinance that was not considered a non-conforming use, then maybe that inspection, you know, was part of that. So somewhere along the way, the city looked at the wrong thing, started adding something that just wasn't allowed under the ordinance. So we're not inspecting it today because it's simply not allowed. That doesn't stop us from, you know, sending the code enforcement officer out there, sending officers out, you know, through there.
Right.
But to add a condition to a renewal that's not listed in the ordinance, when the ordinance says these are the exact steps that the park has to follow, it's just not a proper thing to do.
Because a long time ago, they had a swimming pool there, and it didn't meet ordinance when they inspected it, and they filled it in.
Right, now something like that would be in violation of a building code as well, not even necessarily, you know, anything to do with the park itself, but if, if the pool didn't meet, you know, the international building code, that would have been grounds to shut it down, and maybe it sounds like they, you know, could have caught that during that inspection, but...
Exactly.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, entertain a motion for item five.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual permit renewal for Cedar Crest Mobile Home Park.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second is by Casey. The motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving item five as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve item five as stated. Item six, consideration possible action on approval of construction plan for Montgomery Bend, section two, development number 2203.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is section two of the Montgomery Bend development, so you'll recall about a month ago, y'all approved the plans for section one. This is the next 88 homes in the development. We have reviewed the plans, find no issues with the water sewer drainage and paving as included in the plan set. Couple of things that I'd like to point out, if you go to page 153 of your packet, you'll see a page with a few exhibits on it. So this is section two, so this is more on the south, along the southeast side. This is going to border the detention pond on the south border, and as I mentioned, it's about 88 homes.
All right, entertain a motion.
I have one question.
Question?
I just, the detention pond that's along section one, are they gonna actually build that?
They are. So the detention pond was included in their mass grading and drainage plans, which have already been approved by, by the city engineering team. So yes, that will be built, and that has to be completed as that, the detention pond is sized for the entire neighborhood, not just section one.
Okay, because I saw something on the plat that said Montgomery Bend Detention Pond, and it said proposed by others, I thought that was kind of strange, but so...
I see, I see where you're coming from. That's kind of standard language when it's included in a different plan set.
Okay.
But the others is still Pulte, they're the ones that are building it. It's, it is going to be constructed. They're building section one, section two, and then, and then three. That's, that's more just kind of standard language.
Excuse me, Catherine, that's standard language for what again? I didn't understand.
It says detention pond by others. It's just included in a different plan set, but it's, it is going to be built by Pulte, and they won't be able to get any kind of, any kind of permitting or certificate of occupancies or anything. The pond is private. It's not going to be a city-owned and maintained pond.
And we're confident that that's not going to affect that branch in any fashion?
So they, part of their drainage analysis, they had to show no impact or no increased impact leaving the site from what was existing, no increased flow to be leaving. The developer has coordinated with the adjacent property owner to the best of their abilities. Latest I've heard is that they are going to be, they are continuing conversations to continue how to manage the erosion.
Given the state of affairs, as we know what they are, staff needs to stay really closely tied to that and make sure that they're honoring their commitment there as things go, because I think all of us have that concern over there.
Still would have liked to have had that filter, just to lay eyes on it, but...
Concerning that the drainage on the side there, that, I'm understanding that the property landowner, the drainage falls 100% in the other landowner. It's not split, right? Where the creek is almost out, that's all on the other landowner.
Right.
Right.
The projected completion, probably 2024 on phase one, right?
Yeah, they're expecting to deliver homes first quarter of 2021 for phase one.
2024.
24.
Yeah.
24.
Yeah, you're not going back to the...
I was just gonna say.
Oh goodness, all right. Any further discussion? All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the plans as presented.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second is by Carol. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All in favor of approval of item six as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed, say no, and we will approve item six as stated. Item seven, consideration possible action authorizing the solicitation of water and sewer operations and maintenance services.
Good evening, mayor and council. We'd like to go out for the RFP process for water and sewer operations and maintenance. We're currently two years into a three-year contract, but with some recent issues, we'd like to see what's out there and bring back a proposal at the end of September.
Is this a copy of one that we've sent out before?
This is...
Or have you added to this?
This is the one that will go out.
Yes.
Yeah, this is the one that will go out. This is the accident.
I understand that, but that's not my question. Is it a copy of one that you have sent out previous, or is it a brand-new one, and it's got things added to it?
It's an edited version of what's went out previously with things changed.
Things to address, maybe some of the concerns that we've had, possibly?
Yes, and also resituating some of the stuff with the preventative maintenance, instead of it being all-inclusive, putting it back the way that it used to be where it was separated out and not included, so.
So...
Is there anything specific that you're...
Testing, I think, was one that was brought up, testing regularly, reporting regularly, that type of thing.
Yeah, well, that, that's already in there.
It's already in there.
Yeah, they're supposed to be doing that already.
Right, right. No, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
If they've added some things to it.
We did. It's got minor tweaks to it.
Are they adequate for what we're needing now?
Yes, ma'am, I believe so.
So what tweaks are there? What does the tweaks do? Does it just give them more responsibility or more assurance that, kind of, they have more skin in the game?
Well...
Because I don't know what the other one looks like.
One of the changes was, so in section, I believe it's 4.02, it talks about them being responsible for payments for fines and penalties to TCEQ or the EPA. I made sure to add Lone Star Groundwater Conservation District in there also. That was one of them, so we have an, have an overage based on an operational overrun, and they'll be responsible for the, for the fines for that.
Is that typical?
Typical, run over, typical to be included.
Typical for a city to ask for that.
I think so, yeah. It's, it's not abnormal.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not drilling down to just only two people that would, two bidders. We, it's still...
No, it's fair.
It's bidding.
No, it's, it's a complete fair ask. I mean, it's, we're asking them to keep us in compliance, and if they don't keep us in compliance, the, one of the caveats, though, is if they make an operational recommendation to us and we refuse it, then it gets them off the hook, understandably, but that hasn't happened, so. It definitely puts some skin in the game for them to...
The contract actually runs out when?
April 1st. The, the current contract is April 1st of next year.
April 1st is...
I'm sorry, August 1st, not April 1st. August 1st.
Of 2024?
Yes, ma'am.
So we can get out of the contract anytime?
We can, 30 days' notice, standard contract with 30 days' notice from either party. So, and we go out for bid, I mean, if we don't like what we see, we always have the option to reject all bids and just stay with what we have.
I think from our standpoint, section 1.08, monthly operations report encompasses, since I'm reading a lot of the concerns you've had, transferring it to us, of being able to account for regular testing and reporting and such testing and claims filed and those types of things on a regular basis, I would just encourage looking at performance there and maybe including that in your considerations and not just cost. I think it would be wise of the city to pay more if we had to for really resounding reports of somebody who's really good at that. I mean, I don't know the technical part of that, I'll trust that to you, but that, that seems to encompass a lot of our concerns and problems there. Any further questions? All right, entertain a motion on item seven.
I have to say one thing, Mike, before we make a motion. I appreciate you being proactive and giving, getting out there early. It gives us lots of time to find somebody and look over lots of bids, so I think that's good.
I make a motion that we authorize the solicitation of water and sewer operations and maintenance services.
A second? Motion by Cheryl, second by Stan. Motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving... All in favor of approval of Item 7 as stated, say yes.
Yes.
Anyone oppose, say no. And we will approve Item 7. Thank you, Mike. All right. Addured into closed session and compliance with Section 551.001 ETSCQ dot Texas Government Code to WIT. No items are listed there. We're good? And it is 631. And we are adjourned into executive session.
What happened there?
You know, I made some deer, deer fried deer steak and it looked like dog ate it all.
Dog ate it. Alright, it is 7:14 and we are back from executive session and there are no motions to be made. So council inquire. Alright, just some FYI from a public standpoint, staff is looking fervently for funding opportunities for major projects in and around the city, particularly related to drainage issues and economic development issues and downtown revitalization strategies and stuff going forward. We had very productive planning meeting in which we prioritized seven to ten items that I believe are long range planning related. Some things that we've needed to do as far as shifting gears and moving forward, funding, funding, funding. The top ten things, one through ten, funding. We just simply do not have the money now or the means by which to do a lot of ambitious things. So we are strategizing for funding, funding, funding. I did attend the Galveston Texas municipal league training this past weekend and gave council and staff all that's needed of primary importance. Stressed at that meeting was in the line of risk management and strategizing ways in which to keep financial requests, budget requests from being so weighty. So there are ways to look at asset management strategies that were learned of, pass that on to staff to some degree and advise council as that. If you'll read in there, there's some of that asset management, how do you look at your buildings, how do you look at your automobiles so you're not maybe requesting so much money per year? Spread that out over the years. So we're looking at some of those ways as well. As you know, Congress congressional session is out, governor will call a special session coming in September, very likely there. Absent from that is the very much needed hot taxes and things of that nature to help small towns especially. Airbnb is still not resolved and won't be. The primary emphasis, as you know, is property tax relief. We will get some. And certainly as a city, we want to make sure we're not adding to the tax load of our constituents going forward. So everything looking good from our standpoint, but as we know, there is not a favorable outlook from our legislature in helping cities such as our size especially. So that just means we're going to work harder to get funds and get the help that we need. So thank you to the staff for already responding to such things and we are continuing our meetings for budget going forward. Some three or four related to budget followed by six or seven on planning. So we're working hard. Thank you to the council and staff for your efforts. There is a lot of time and energy related in what we're doing. Any other discussion? Alright, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? It is 7:18 and we are adjourned.